Good afternoon and welcome to this special Britcham Climate Change Focus Group session in partnership with Kaden, Indonesian Chamber of Commerce and Industry. The UK will host the UN Climate Change Conference in November of this year. Amongst other opportunities, this conference also offers an excellent opportunity to be a catalyst for enhanced cooperation between the UK and Indonesian stakeholders in order to support the climate change ambitions of both countries, particularly in respect of associated business collaboration. Kaden and Britcham have a joint working group to support bilateral business collaboration, and climate change is one of the focuses. In order to provide more insight into the climate change aspirations of both the UK and Indonesia, and to discuss key opportunities for mutually beneficial collaboration, I'm delighted to welcome today two distinguished guests. Firstly, I am grateful to be joined by Ibushinta Kamdani, who is both the owner and chief executive of Sintesa Group, a diversified Indonesian conglomerate with interests in real estate, energy, industrial products and consumer products. As a businesswoman, Shinta is also involved in numerous business and social activities, including as vice-chairwoman of the Indonesian Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and the vice-chairwoman of the Employers' Association of Indonesia, executive board of the International Chambers of Commerce, president of the Indonesian Business Council for Sustainable Development, as well as a founder of the Indonesian Business Coalition for Women Empowerment and the Angel Investment Network of Indonesia. She is also a member of the APAC Business Advisory Council of Indonesia. She was also chosen by the United Nations as one of the 30 global corporate leaders to join the Global Investors for Sustainable Development, GISD Alliance. As part of her achievement, she received awards amongst others from Forbes, Age 50 Powerful Businesswomen in 2012, 2013 and 2016, 30 Best CEOs by Indonesia Award in 2015 and 2017. She was decorated as Commander of the Pola Star by King Carl Gustav XVI of Sweden, and Commander of the Order of Leopold of Belgium. And in 2019, she was awarded as the Woman Entrepreneur of the Year at the Asia Corporate Excellence and Sustainability Award. Ibushinta, welcome today. Joining Shinta today is equally distinguished Owen Jenkins, who currently serves as the UK Ambassador to Indonesia and Timor-Leste. Before his appointment as ambassador, Owen was the British Prime Minister's Special Representative for Afghanistan and Pakistan, responsible for engaging at the highest levels in the region and internationally on such matters as the Afghan peace process, counter-terrorism collaboration and bilateral relations. He was also the director for the UK Foreign Commonwealth Office with South Asia and Afghanistan, overseeing a staff complement of 3,000 and an operational budget of £120 million. A career diplomat, he has also served in Argentina, Turkey, Brussels and India. He has worked on diverse issues such as the Balkan Wars, climate change and economics, and has a strong interest in emerging markets, international security and links between sustainability and prosperity. And hopefully we'll get into much of that today. What I would like to do now, I would like to go back to Ibushinta initially. Shinta, your CV is very long and very diverse, and you're involved in multiple organisations. A couple of them that really caught my eye, and one in particular, is your official role as a co-chair Global Investor for Sustainable Development Alliance, which I understand was set up by the UN. I don't think many of our members may be familiar with that. So perhaps you can maybe explain what your role is there, and how that connects with your ongoing role at Kaden, particularly as to how that will help drive the UN's sustainability goal agenda within the Indonesian business community?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for this opportunity. Actually, the Global Investor on Sustainable Development Alliance was established by the UN last year, and brought up 30 CEOs from different countries, and I'm one of them. And the whole purpose is basically how to weaken up more awareness of sustainable development in general, but specifically on investing in SDG. So as you know, at the moment, many companies are being encouraged to support and promote and actually bring SDG to be integrated into their business model. So with this alliance, we are also looking into many opportunities of how companies can invest in terms of instruments, financial instruments, as well as we are also posing many of the indexes, measurements, you know, for companies to be able to focus and drive more on SDG. So we are definitely expected to raise awareness in the global community about the urgency of this SDG, and therefore we are also committed to collaborate across country, across financial sectors and with other businesses to stimulate more funding and investment in sustainable development projects around the world. I think as we know, during this COVID period especially, this becomes even more important that we need to fast-track and scale up to mobilise resources and pushing effort, and also to shift the incentives and habits of key actors along the private sectors and investment. We also need to, you know, to look into how we can be more inclusive and bring more companies, not just the big significant, you know, the big conglomerates group, but also going into, you know, more the middle companies, middle-sized company, including even the SME. So my commitment, I think, to the alliance is in the form also of the support from the Indonesian government commitment through the National Medium Term in Development Plan, or we call it APGAMN. And most importantly, to establish also new corporate governance and investor stewardship to move in tandem by incorporating more long-term SDG lens and promoting accountability through core industries, specific SDG-related reporting standards. Now, how is this related to Kaden as well? As you know, the Indonesian Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Kaden is basically the umbrella of also businesses in Indonesia mandated by law. So members are, Kaden are basically business in all kinds of sectors. And when I, about, I think, I would say six years ago, we started to think of how Kaden can really play a role in sustainable development. And thus, we established in the organisation what we call the Indonesian Business Coalition on Sustainable Development. So at that time, I championed this effort as well, so that we don't have to replicate the wheel, because we know the World Business Council on Sustainable Development has all the programmes for companies to promote SDG. So that's how we incorporate the IBCSD through Kaden, and we realised that, you know, we have, we need, of course, collaborate, the collaborative approach with all the different parties, including government, society, civil society, and therefore it's important that our programmes are also cohesive in terms of working with all the different stakeholders. We are, you know, many, many, of course, at the beginning, it was more champion company, more multinational, but now more and more, I think, local companies also have begun to really push this agenda forward.
Thank you, Shinta. I was pleased to hear you were referencing the small and medium-sized enterprises, because there's often been comments that it's been the larger companies that have been embracing this, but it seems to be more challenging to get the smaller and medium-sized enterprises to start to embrace this agenda. This is maybe a question we'll get into later. Owen, this is quite an important year for the UK in terms of climate change. I understand the UK will hold the presidency of the UN Climate Change Conference. Can you maybe give us a little bit of an insight as to what that entails for the UK, and how that percolates down here in Indonesia in terms of activities that the embassy will be engaging in?
Sure, thanks, Ainsley, and thank you for taking this initiative. I'm really glad to be able to be part of it. You're right, it is an important year for the UK, but it's also an important year for the world, not to be too grand about it, that we all need to be taking action to ensure that we can avoid dangerous climate change. We've agreed internationally that we will try to avoid temperature rises exceeding 1.5 degrees, and we've got a long way to go to get there. And that's what the meeting in Glasgow is really all about. It's about how can we ensure that together as a world community, we commit to and then take the action that's needed to avoid dangerous climate change. This is, every year, there is a conference of the parties, the UN jargon for these meetings, but every four or five years, there is a particularly significant one, when the world needs to come together to drive that forward. The last one of those was in Paris, when we reached the Paris Agreement. And we want Glasgow to take forward that agenda and really commit the world through new nationally-developed commitments, which are the plans which nations make to take forward action, as well as long-term goals for getting to net zero, and we want Glasgow to be the moment when that comes together. We're doing this in collaboration with Italy as our partner for COP26, and there are five key campaigns, which we hope will touch on every aspect, or all of the key aspects at least, of the climate transition. The first of those is the energy transition. So how do we accelerate the movement into renewable energy and away from fossil fuels, particularly away from coal? The second is around nature-based solutions. So how do we ensure that carbon emissions from land use are driven down, so that agriculture and agricultural production plays its part in reducing emissions and preventing climate change? And within that, how do we preserve the natural ecosystems, the natural ecosystem services on which so much of our civilisation relies? And Indonesia is an extraordinary superpower in that regard, and I hope we'll have a chance to talk about that a bit later. The third area is finance. I mean, and this is, Ibushinta has already touched on this, because in the end, all of this is about investment. How can we invest in these new and tremendously exciting sectors, which have great growth potential, great potential for jobs, but need that upfront investment to really take advantage of the opportunities? So that's a really important strand. And then the last two are around adaptation and resilience. So we know that however much we do, there are still going to be climate impacts on the world. How do we adapt and make ourselves more resilient to those impacts? And then lastly, one sectoral area, which is transport, as a key area for accelerated transition away from fossil fuels and towards renewables. And I'm sure that just as I described those, it's clear that Indonesia is a key partner in all of them. For this embassy, the two we're focusing on really are the energy transition and nature-based solutions, because of Indonesia's extraordinary performance and potential in these areas. And we're very keen to work closely with our Indonesian government partners in support of their own priorities. I mean, these are things which Indonesia is doing for itself, and international partners such as the UK need to work with Indonesia to support and move forward those ambitious goals which Indonesia has set itself. So we're very proud to be doing that, and we have government dialogues on both those issues. But as Ibushinta has alluded to, this isn't just a matter for governments, and that's why I think this meeting today is so important. There are many other parts of society which need to engage with this. We have a dialogue with faith leaders, for example, because religion tells us all that we need to protect the natural environment, we need to protect the creation. We have dialogues with civil societies, but also I think the role of business is absolutely central to this, partly because it's the place where most investment comes from, but also because it's the place where the innovation and creativity that we're going to need to solve some of these issues is most important. And Indonesia's business community is famed for those factors, so we're delighted to be able to work with Kaden and with others to really crowd in the private sector to this extraordinary challenge we all face. Thanks.
Thank you, Owen. A couple of these sectors you mentioned are the pillars, the energy transition, nature-based solutions, these are two that are forming quite a lot of ongoing dialogue all the time now with business. So definitely in the right marketplace, I think, to make some serious moves in terms of achievement in these areas. Shinta, can I ask, just in terms of Indonesia's targets regarding NDCs or nationally-determined contributions, do you have any insight on the targets and the progress to date? And more importantly, how is Indonesian government working with business to develop action plans and legislation?
Yes, of course, Indonesia is also part of, on board with this Paris Agreement, and Indonesia has met and communicated their NDC. It has been actually ratified, I think, under the law of number 16, 2016. Indonesia NDC actually compromised two integral aspects, which is the mitigation and adaptation. And mitigation involves action to reduce the total greenhouse gas emission, and Indonesia has committed to unconditionally reduce 29% of the GHG emission compared to business-as-usual baseline, and up to 41% with adequate international support by 2030. So it's quite an ambitious achievement. In detail, I think the plan to achieve the target by reducing 17.2% of emissions in the forestry sector, 11% in the energy sector, 0.38% in the waste management, and 0.32% in the agriculture sector, and 0.10% in the industrial sector. So to talk about the progress so far, maybe we can focus on the two sectors out of the five mitigation sectors, which is the forestry and the energy sector, because these two sectors actually contribute the most of Indonesia overall greenhouse gas emission. Forestry, I think, includes results of land rechange and the peak forest fires, accounts for about 52%, and the energy sector accounts about 37%. In total, both sectors contribute to almost 96%. So in 2017, one year after the ratification, Indonesia recorded around 1.15 billion tonnes of CO2 equivalent, that is almost 25% actual GHG compared to the business-as-usual baseline. And also in the same year, the highest contributor is in the energy sector, which accounts for 48% of the total emissions, followed by the forest and peak fire, about 25%. If we simply look at the progress that has been made, actually, it is so close to the 29% unconditional target of the Indonesia NDC. But of course, we know that keeping the good progress and aiming for the 41 targets are much more desirable. That is about the mitigation. As mentioned before, we also, the NDC also outlined the important aspect of the adaptation, and in the sense that we need better capacity to build a resilient community against global climate change. So the target in the adaptation respect is to address more the community vulnerability by tough stage, guarding also the production and distribution of basic rights like food, water and energy. And this is actually has been translated into Indonesia National Action Plan on Climate Change Adaptation, that put emphasis on economic resilience, social safety and livelihood, and ecosystem resilience, in which also it includes disaster risk, disaster risk to reduce, so we call it disaster risk reduction strategy. So what is the opportunity for business engagement? I think how business can actually develop relevant action, and also, I think, we have work hand-in-hand with our government to come up with working action plan as the effort to achieve this NDC target. We, close relation with the government also allow business to communicate our concerns about policies, or contribute to the implementation of those policies. For example, me as the president of IBCSD, I have business how business contribute to the NDC by implementing their own carbon reduction and mitigation process, such as forest fire mitigation programme, as well as doing their own carbon reduction programme. One of our members, for example, even hold a project in Katingan Kalimantan, Borneo, that supplies carbon offset. So this is quite a breakthrough for Indonesia. We also, in other examples, for some manufacturing company, also effort in implementing the circular economy in their business process, I think this helps reduce also the waste, reduce energy, and of course, reducing the production process, carbon footprint. But when I talk about opportunity, I think I also have to mention that many, many challenges. And I think I want to just simply explain it. I think Indonesia NDC implementation programme is now divided into three phases. The first phase is about the implementation in the precondition that comprise of seven action plans, such as capacity building, data policy or development of guidelines. And phase two is the implementation under the coordination of Ministry of Environment and Forestry, and National Development Agency, BAPRNA. And the third phase is the monitoring and evaluation, which includes also report publishing of the programme result. Each of the phase, business face some great challenges, of course. I mean, you know, I can talk maybe later about the energy sector, that is quite a going on the transition, energy going to renewable, it's quite a challenge. The whole, I think, the regulatory, we're talking about the entire, I mean, there are many, many aspects, I think, you know, something that, well, I can talk, you know, many, many things about our challenge in going into the transition and energy transition. I think in a lot of times, government is very clear, they have the target, for example, on renewable, they want to achieve 25%, 23% by 2025. But I think this is where, you know, in the implementation, it's much harder for businesses to follow that. So if I may say that, I think, although many, many companies are wanting to follow through and, you know, wanting to do this, I think, in the actual implementation has been, you know, quite a number of challenges that, I would say, become hurdle for company to be able to support in this, some of these programmes.
Thank you for that, Shinta. And I share much of what you said, and in terms of a foreign investor is active in a couple of these sectors, there are challenges here. And we hope that we can all work together, particularly in advocacy, to try and overcome them, because there is a tremendous appetite for investment in some of these sectors. So on that subject, I'd like to ask Owen, the UK has got its own NDC targets, and it's been quite successful in a number of areas. Would you like to make reference to a couple of, some of the sectors where you really think we can add value here in Indonesia?
Sure, thanks, Ainsley. You're quite right, we do have our own NDC and our own targets, because we know it's really important for developed countries to lead the way on this, and show how that sustainable transition can not only succeed, but create a really vibrant economy with good jobs, high-quality investments and so on. The UK, of course, was where the industrial revolution was born, we were the first coal superpower, so we know we have a particular responsibility to make the transition quickly. And we hope we're doing so. So over the last, since 1990, we've grown our economy by 75%, while cutting our carbon emissions by over 43% in real, in absolute terms. So we emit nearly half as much carbon as we used to, while still growing our economy. And we've done that by really investing in sectors which we think can drive the future green economy. And our prime minister has just committed to a new plan in this area, a 10-point plan, which has identified a series of areas where the UK will be investing and experimenting and trying to use new technologies and new frameworks to move things forward. And that'll include a range of things. It will take forward some things we're doing already, like offshore wind, where the UK is already a world leader. But it will also look at new technologies, for example, around hydrogen, around new and for more advanced nuclear power. It will look at how we can move difficult sectors like air travel and maritime transport to a greener basis, which I think will be really useful for Indonesia. It will look at greener buildings, at how we can capture, store and use carbon from emissions which have to keep going. It will look at our natural environment, as well as some of the areas I talked about earlier, like green finance and innovation. There is going to be a huge British investment into this, around £12 billion of government money, and we think about three times as much private money going into this area, which will create at least quarter of a million new jobs. And we're doing this because we think not only will it be good for us, but the lessons that we learn from it will be helpful to countries like Indonesia. I think some of the technologies where the UK has led the way, such as offshore wind, such as marine power from tide or wave power, can be incredibly relevant here. Investments in sustainable and green marine transport, I think, are very important for Indonesia. But also on the regulatory side, Ibushinta has already touched on this, I hope that some of the policy work that we've done domestically in the UK can also be of interest to our government partners, to establish how you create that predictable, long-term regulatory framework, which helps investors from outside Indonesia, but also inside, to invest in long-term projects to drive that green transition. Thanks.
Thank you, Owen. Shinta, I want to mention a number of technologies, there are quite a few of which are related to energy transition. And as I mentioned in my introduction, that Sintesa Group is involved in the energy sector. There's been quite a lot of chat in Indonesia, but still some expansion of coal-fired power generation capacity. What would you like to, how do you think this transition could be accelerated? Any two or three things that you think the government could be doing to encourage a faster track for acceleration from fossil fuels to cleaner energy sources? You're on mute.
I'm sure we all agree, gentlemen, that this is not an easy task, to shift from, we call the fossil fuel to clean energy. And it is, I think, particularly hard for Indonesia, whose energy production sources are more non-renewable fossil fuel. So around 50% of the power plant in Indonesia is using coal. And when we talk about coal, we know we talk about pricing, right? So, and I think this is really the biggest challenge, you know, with coal, about 50% and other non-renewable like gas and oil accounts for about 37%. So this number is high because So um this number is high because right now, as you know, Indonesia have also subsidized fossil fuel. So I think that's one thing for sure. Unless the government changed the policy on the subsidized fossil fuel, it's very difficult for renewable to be able to compete, right? And and this is, this is the first most important. Um I mean, of course, we we are hopeful with all the new technology innovation. You know, the price of renewable is also going down. Yes, we understand. But I think still, you know, I think this subsidized fossil fuel is a bit tough um to compete. Um that being said, I think um the coal industry also in Indonesia right now is moving like a high speed train uh to stop the super fast train. We cannot immediately stop. So we need to really have a trend, what we call the um transition, so it will not incur a lot of losses. What we need to do now is to slow down. I mean, you know, how we can really stop building new coal power plant? Um and how can this existing coal power transition? You know, uh maybe through gas before, you know, and and things like that. So responding to this situation, the government also has enacted the few progress. Um uh huge development has commenced this year. Uh I think I'm trying to on the new regulation, yeah, of the Ministry of Energy and Mineral Resources, number four of twenty twenty, that is expected to overcome several regulatory obstacles related to renewable energy power plants and make investment more attractive. One of the most important change addressed in this regulation is the elimination, what we call the built on operator transfer or BOTOT. The scheme, this scheme is for all type of renewable energy power plant. And uh before IPP, all IPP cannot own the project asset. But with this new regulation for renewable energy IPP, it may all own all the asset and do not have to transfer such a project to the national electricity company or PLN at the end of the term. So this help more bankability concern surrounding most renewable energy projects. And also, uh the new regulation address the procurement process clearer and more efficient for the renewable projects. Although there are some positive development, of course, continuous reform need to be encouraged to improve the investment climate in the renewable energy sector. I mean, I can just give you some example, you know, for example, we're doing geothermal. And for geothermal, I think financing is a very big part. I mean, many, we can't get bankable for drilling, for example. So drilling, you have to use equity. And as you know, geothermal is quite quite a high cost. Um so you know, that means the only company that have certain size would be able to do drilling on their own. And we also need more of this financial incentive, tax incentive also. And also the support on the social aspect. I find that many of the projects, especially geothermal, for example, has issue with the social community. Because the the community usually doesn't really understand about geothermal and they think geothermal is dirty. I actually face it ourselves in our project, you know, that the community think geothermal is not good because it's a dirty, you know, it's 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 not renewable, it's dirty. So so things like this, some of the social unrest is still happening around some of these projects that needs to be supported by the government. Um also on the more affordable, I think, again, you know, I want to highlight the more affordable renewable energy products um as well as standard in energy efficiency. I think we need more PPP, public-private partnership collaboration in energy R and D especially. Um and we we are hopeful that all in this initiative will will enhance faster Indonesia towards renewable energy.
Thank you, Shinta. You you mentioned a number of of points there. One was the ongoing subsidy for fossil fuels. Hopefully, the transition can transition that out at some point in time. Uh you also brought up an interesting topic on the social aspects. It's not so long ago, and I think Owen might remember this, when offshore wind hit the UK, a lot of people were complaining, it was obstructing their views, it was ugly. So the the renewable energy sector has faced challenges in the past, but they've been overcome. Hopefully, they'll be overcome here. And particularly, Shinta, you you referenced quite a bit on the financial side of things. I'm conscious that time is marching on. So what I want to do now is bring in our two additional guests. Reno Dona Sopotro, who is President Commissioner of Standard Chartered here, is also the Vice Chair of Britcham and the Vice Chair of Standard Chartered in Asia Pacific. Pac Doni and myself have been friends for quite some time, and I know this is a subject he's passionate about. Also joining Doni will be Jeffrey Chatilly, who's who's very involved in the nature-based solution aspect of projects here in Indonesia. And he's been very successful in securing UK finance for that. So what I want to do now is to to ask Doni, just to get his view on the financial opportunities and what he said so far. And maybe pose one or two questions. Doni, can I hand over to you?
Thank you, Ainsley. And a very good afternoon, Ibu Shinta Ambassador Owen Jenkins. Uh I suppose actually, as both of you have touched upon this, from a financing perspective, our sustainable development and climate change achievements, mitigation achievements, as you would rely heavily on financing and capital into the countries or the places where it is the most, which is the developing and emerging countries. Now, perhaps actually, just to give a one perspective actually on this, we are still seeing a gap of investment in emerging markets. Um yes, VG investment is still trillions of dollars short of the capital needed to meet the two thousand thirty targets. Uh we did a research at the end of last year titled the fifty trillion dollars, thirty trillion dollars questions. Essentially, actually, we spoke with around three hundred asset managers with a combined AUM of fifty trillion dollars. That's equivalent to more than half of global GDP in the in search of the answers in relation to SDG financing. Now, some interesting insights here. Uh may sound a little bit paradoxical, but there you go. The research shows that global investors are generally under invested in emerging markets. Where at least two thirds of their AUM currently invested in still the developed markets. And almost three quarters of the investors, or around seventy percent, believe that the pandemic has widened the capital gap between emerging and developing and developed markets. So this is quite concerning, obviously, if the crisis is causing emerging market investment to fall. Um on the other hand, the research reveals that almost nine out of ten global investors have seen that their emerging market investments match or could perform those in the developed markets. And I think more positively, almost three quarters, about seventy four percent, say that a green recovery, which is cutting CO2 emissions part of a build back better approach, is now a global priority. Now, sixty one percent say that the crisis has encouraged their own firms to direct investments towards a green recovery. And overall, sustainable investment is indeed guaranteed base. About eighty percent of the investment firms have moved beyond screening to a more focused and integrated approach to environmental, social and governance investments. Uh so we see actually that, I think, Bushinta highlighted earlier, I mean, this is time for Indonesia to garner all of this capital, you know, from within. But again, the flow of funds in the near future or starting now actually is coming towards this part of the world. So I think that's really actually a match and it's up for us actually to gather. Now, in terms of opportunity, IFC estimated twenty three trillion dollars in climate smart investment opportunities that exist in key sectors in the emerging markets between around sixteen percent thirty. ASEAN alone is estimated to need about three trillion dollar of green investment until two thousand thirty, so about two hundred billion dollars annually. So opportunities are plenty. Now, Indonesia's greatest private sector investment opportunity is essentially in electricity, electricity, with an overall need of about three hundred twenty seven billion dollars, as well as construction of new green buildings at about three hundred forty five thousand. So as a global bank, we, Standard Chartered, are providing clients supporting the development of their transition to more sustainable business models, developing innovative products that provide a vehicle for sustainable finance. And we internally developing a climate risk framework and make commitment to align our lending activities with a Paris agreement. So the more, and I know actually we're not alone actually with this, because the more of the international financial institutions trying to play this intermediation function between the capital that sits actually at the moment, more actually on the developed markets into the emerging markets can only mean a great contribution to achieving the SDG goals. We have also committed to achieving net zero emission from our own operations by two thousand thirteen. Now, we believe it is important for Indonesia to set up a framework and to leverage the innovations that has been emerging in the sustainable finance. So again, to Bushinta's point, it's about capturing actually that opportunity that will come this way. Um Indonesia has got some fantastic innovations in this regard. Sustainability Link Loans, Indonesia's Green Superco initiatives that allows investors to purchase green energy bonds has been one of them. Um we are also seeing many industries now thinking about decarbonization pathways. And transition finance is starting to emerge as key and critical theme. In fact, actually, we're just about to complete actually our first transition finance project for a company in Indonesia. Uh and no doubt, Indonesia has a lot of industries obviously in the traditionally maybe brown sectors, but can also, that can also transition into a more climate friendly substitute. Now, last but not least, just to touch upon, as I said, where Jeff here, one of the other aspects within the financing on carbon credit trading, that is really where Indonesia stands or sits on a significant potential. Essentially, Indonesia is a natural, it's a superpower, it's a new superpower on the natural capital side. Um and we believe that the potential for carbon credit you know, covering the forest feed line, mangrove line, is an important aspect uh for Indonesia to be able to showcase and demonstrate actually its NDCs uh and also play a much bigger part in the world to help achieve SDGs, not just for Indonesia alone, but also actually for other countries and other companies. Um so I believe actually that's the perspective, as you, where Jeff can add actually a lot more sort of uh view there. So I I I probably actually just have a quick question actually to Ibu Shinta and Friday. From Kadi's point of view, how do you think the progress and the level of understanding of the Indonesian companies in general uh to transition to this net zero? We see a lot of the companies, global companies particularly actually, committing themselves to a target of having the net zero. Uh but how do you see the progress for the Indonesian companies? And and what do you think needs to be done further to promote all of this?
Yeah, that's the million dollar question, right? I mean, honestly speaking, I think I have to tell you the truth that it it has progressed significantly. I mean, I think we we have seen it through our members as well, you know. And um in IBCSD, these are members that are really focused and they have really put through some of their individual target companies. But I still see that many still comes from, of course, the multinational, the big companies, right? Local companies are starting, but you know, we will be talking about the same local companies. Um so, uh yes, we've made significant progress, but still not fast enough. Um I I my my, I think as Kadi, using my my role, you know, my head in IBCSD and Kadi, I really is hoping that more local companies can participate. We have now, what we have achieved is come up with the how to in each of the sectors. Very clear, even with transportation. So we are very, very clear, each of the second energy, you know, land use, we are very clear. We are telling them the how to, but they have to commit. And commitment also got to do with money. Commitment got to do with financing. When you want to commit to this, this is not just like, oh, I'm just going to to say I'm, you know, it's it, there is um uh investment. And this is why I always talk about we are investing, because there is an investment component. You will be, you get the, at the end, maybe at the end of the the road, you you will get the significant impact, positive event. But on the way, you have to invest. And this is really the key. A lot of companies are still, does not gauge the incentive to to do it enough, right? So so this is really where the the problems come. So I would say um we are not yet able to bring many in terms of scaling up. Yes, we have a number and these companies are very committed, but not enough. So this is what we are trying to pick up and assist. And at the end of the day, we can only do this by also understanding the measurement. And this is why the how to include the measurement. Right now, government already have sustainability report, for example, as a mandatory aspect um for the the public listed companies. And it's funny because uh you know, we were so excited to bring all these listed company come to the picture. And then government say, oh, um you know, I think there's there, well, let's delay it another year. Just by delaying another year, you know, those company that was originally only gun for wanting to do this is given more time and it said, oh, okay, in that way, you know, let's wait, you know, that's with that. So they're still thinking we only do this if it's required, you know. And this is really, you know, if it's required, if there is something in it for us. So it's it's, that is, that needs to be tangible. And this also include when we talk about carbon credit mechanism, you know, many maybe are interested. But it's too complex to even, you know, they they don't get the benefit immediately. This is the way they look at this, too complex to even. So things like this is what we really need to take care of. So it's not just talking about wanting to, you know, not just putting a target for yourself, but really, can you actually achieve it and how, what's the progress that you have made? And this has to come from each of the individual companies as well.
Fine, Ainsley, you're still mute.
Thank you, Shinta. Important point there. Uh there there is actually a lot of finance available for green or clean initiatives. It's just understanding how to access it. A lot of smaller.
Yeah, yeah. And I have, we continue supporting this, right? But as you know, uh having it is one thing, actually getting it is another thing. I mean, as a group, we've been through this, believe me, because we are very clear in our target and what we want. I think that the financing is available out there, but to access it is not as easy as it sounds. Let's put it that way. And I think this is something that I think we need to work more with financial sectors, with the sustainable financing. This is why it's very important and it's good Standard Chartered is championing this as well. Because we need to get the message very clear. Uh you know, institution more and more are not going to finance, you know, none uh the the, you know, the the projects that are not, you know, the giving us the right message, so.
With no disrespect to Jeff, I'm going to ask him to comment in a minute about how a small major enterprise has been successful in attracting that finance. But before we get on to Jeff, Owen, clearly, the UK uh has a deep strength in the financial sector, more so than most countries. Is this going to play a prominent role in in your dialogue going forward to the Climate Change Conference? It's something that the UK can clearly offer that not a lot of countries can necessarily do so.
It it absolutely is, Ainsley. And I think the key point is the one that Ibu Shinta and Pac Doni have already made is how do we just make that connection more more straightforward? Uh how do we, how do we get the people, the investors who say, yes, there's a wall of money, I want to invest in renewable projects together with the with the projects which need that investment? Um and that's not as easy as it as it should be. And this is something, as you imply, Ainsley, where the UK, I think, can really help because we have such an extraordinary financial sector. We're already, London is already the the leading green finance sector internationally. And there's so much innovation going on in so many London institutions, thinking about exactly this problem. How do we get sustainable finance and investment out of the ivory towers of the finance world and into into real world world projects? Um to do that, we've made another number of innovations ourselves. So we we set up the world's first So we we set up the world's first green investment bank back in in twenty twelve. The London Stock Exchange is increasingly active in this in this area. And they've raised over twenty seven billion pounds through their dedicated green bond segment. And we've set up what we call the Green Finance Initiative, which is a sort of a sort of one stop shop to bring together actors across this sector so that people don't have to go to lots of different places. They can just find one place where they can find the different services that they need. And we're really keen to to work with Indonesia, including through a renewable energy program that we're running called Mentari, to try to help establish a similar body for for Indonesia to address the problem which Ibushinta quite rightly highlights that this is at the moment much more complicated than it than it should be. We can also help, I think, on the regulatory side, that government has a big role to play in setting the right framework and ensuring that the the government institutions around finance deal with this properly. So it's been a big issue, for example, which the the Bank of England has worked on. And our Financial Conduct Authority is is one of the managers, the regulators rather, of the financial sector, to think about how they can use their authorities and their influence to make sure that this transition happens more quickly. So you're quite right, Ainsley, this is this is an area we really want to focus on because we think we can, we think our experience can help. And I would just say that we've had some success domestically in doing this. So we were talking about coal earlier. Thirty years ago, seventy percent of the UK's power came from coal. Now it's under three percent and it will be none in the next couple of years. And that's been done through driving this investment in the way that that I've described. So I think I think it can really work and we're keen to keen to make that happen elsewhere too. Thanks.
Thank you. I think that's a huge opportunity for collaboration between the UK and Indonesia. And on that subject, Jeff, you you've really built up a business from scratch here in Indonesia focuses on land restoration, forestry restoration. And you've been able to secure quite a lot of of finance from from the UK in the past. And you've also been selling carbon credits to to UK based businesses. Based on your experience, do you have any insights and questions you'd like to to pose? Because you're really at the at the cutting edge of a lot of this here.
Yeah, thank you, Ainsley. Good afternoon, Ibushinta Ambassador Jenkins. Yeah, I mean, we have seen a lot of private sector engagement around climate mitigation in Indonesia. Over the last ten years, we've seen the development of a of a new sector around reducing CO2 emissions from forest restoration projects, or as we call it, nature based solutions, but also from renewable energy projects. And we've seen a wide range of actors, including major Indonesian conglomerates, state owned enterprises and international and, as you said, UK investors. And we've seen that the climate mitigation impacts from this private sector engagement so far have been globally significant. Within the forestry sector, there are four fully certified projects using international standards that cover two hundred eight sixty eight thousand hectares across the country. And these projects have reduced over fifty nine million tons of CO2 and continue to reduce over ten million tons annually. Two of those projects have been invested by by UK based investment firms. And these projects, they also create rural jobs, helping stimulate the economy across the country. They generate tax revenue and they also help reduce the risk of forest fire, which is also a major issue in the country. On the renewable energy side, we've seen that new investments into the sector that have leveraged carbon credits produce over six hundred megawatts of clean energy. And we were also seeing a a build out of the demand for carbon credits and offsets. And a significant number of Fortune five hundred and UK companies have made net zero commitments. And they use international certification standards to ensure that these CO2 emission reductions are robust and verifiable. And what's really interesting is that these companies are actively buying carbon offsets from internationally certified projects in Indonesia. The carbon credit markets, and as Pak Doni was mentioning, there's a real demand from from the markets for credits that are produced here in Indonesia. And so the the main question that I have for Ibushinta today is, you know, how does Kaden and its members feel about the current draft presidential regulation on carbon economic value? And do they feel that it helps ensure the business community can fully participate in these global markets regarding the production of carbon offsets?
Shinta.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. How can I, how can I say this more bluntly? I think, I mean, of course, we have, we responded positively, but I have to say, implementation wise, it's still not there. I mean, I think, as you mentioned, there are companies that that are are starting to to work on it, let's put it that way, but I still think that the number is still very small. So I think what we need to 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 do is educate more, maybe our our businesses in how to take advantage of this and to actually roll out through the regulation. Sometimes this is the problem with our government. It comes up with with a with a good regulation, but there is a gap in the implementation. And I think this this is something that technicality of it on the implementation, I think, needs to be much clearer. And I think not many companies are are still at this moment taking advantage of it, let's put it. So.
So hopefully, that's some, that's maybe an opportunity for the UK again, Owen, to.
I would think so, I would think so.
Socialization framework to explain.
Should perhaps give some more support in how to make it work, you know? It's just like I mentioned before, I think, especially those those Indonesian local companies, many are not very fully aware of how to to really maximize the value for this. So so I think we need to, if the UK can have a program, I mean, we'll be happy. IBCSD will be happy to, you know, to support on this as well.
I think that would be great. We have quite a lot of experience in the UK of how you roll out a carbon market and give value, give economic value to to carbon in a way that engages business. It it takes time, it is complex, but the regulatory framework we've we've got and the communication with companies is certainly something we'd be very happy to share with Indonesian colleagues in 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 government and in business as well, if that's if that's useful.
Yeah, I mean, we've always talked about the Katingan Project. I thought that so, you know, Katingan, the owner is also friend, good friends. And I said, you know, you know, I always use them as as an example, but I said, you know, there need much more and more companies like you. I said, you know, we cannot keep on using you as the example, where are the others? I said, you know, bring more, bring more.
True, they're a good example.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm I'm conscious that I've used up most of your time. We got a quick question for Owen. Is the embassy going to be net zero?
Absolutely, yes. It's it's not straightforward, but yes, we're absolutely committed to that, as indeed is the whole the whole Foreign Commonwealth Development Office. So our ministry is is going net zero. We have an action plan internally within the embassy, which not only addresses carbon emissions, but also seeks to to reduce plastics use, energy use and food waste, all of the other things which which impact on our environmental footprint. And actually, we found not only is it the right thing to do, but it's really enthused our staff as well. It's something which people feel they want to contribute to. So it's been, it's been a really nice project. Of course, the pandemic has helped with with flying less, but I think there's a lot more we can do to make sure that we are as efficient as possible within the embassy. So absolutely, we we're not there yet. We know we're still learning, but we're we're determined to get there.
And what about Kadin, Shinta? Maybe if Kadin had a a target to be net zero, it could send a good message and the example for all your members.
Clear, of course, Kadin Carbon Neutral Initiative is something that we are still working on now. I think we all do know that all programs run by businesses is is using the national target and timeline by the Indonesian government as the benchmark. And we understand that every member companies have different level of capacity and also adaptation in fulfilling this target. So therefore, in in this aspect, we are closely, you know, we are closely monitoring our member companies as well. And we are, also, we want to close the development gap by promoting more expertise and practices between private sector in fulfilling their climate change target and action. And also, I think, business needs to do more than the the just the government timeline, that it would be great. But I think to have a timeline, it's good, you know, following the government, but we also need to walk at the same pace with the government so that we need to to also move faster. And I think this is something that a business should take, Kadin should take a lead. So I would say to the answer, yes, of course, but ours is depends, of course, on all the companies that are under us. So what our job is to how to facilitate for them to move faster in achieving the target.
Even within the four walls of the Kadin office, you could become net zero.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the first, the first step. I think one of the things that's come up, it's been clear today is that the whole need to to meet some of these climate change targets cannot be done by governments alone, cannot be done by business alone. And it needs constant collaboration. I think if I'm right, Owen, that the Climate Change Conference this time will have more of a a business element to it than the than the Paris one did, I believe. That's just a realization, the fact that all the stakeholders need to work together. You also mentioned civil society as well. We're all, we're all in this boat and we need to make it move in the right direction. I'd just like to ask Shinta and Owen if you have any final comments you you would like to to make before we we sign off.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think, I would say that it's while we are also preparing for COP in UK, I think, I would say another core strength in fighting climate change, as you mentioned before, also in the through the financial channel. And I think the fact, again, I want to reiterate that the UK financial sector is increasing in the leadership of this green finance and carbon credit trading. So I think Indonesia could definitely be a major beneficiary for this better collaboration. So I would really would like to have something more concrete happening. I don't know, Ambassador, whether you can facilitate us working with some of these UK financial institution. I think this can be, you know, we look at, you know, the global environment finance projects. I think Indonesia will be able to also take some advantage on this. And maybe we can be more specific in what a program project moving towards also the next COP that will be in UK, that we have maybe something programming, I don't know, certain program that we can do together towards that. I think it will be good that if we can have something concrete that we can collaborate with.
Thank you, Shinta. There you go, Owen. You're a mini COP for Indonesia, maybe with more of a finance focus.
Well, I I certainly think that we want to be able to showcase real Indonesian success at COP. I think it's, there is so much potential here, there is so much to be done, that it would be fantastic if we could go to COP with something like that. And what what we need to create, I think, is that virtual circle which we've seen in the UK and elsewhere, where a stable government regulatory framework encourages and stimulates investment, encourages financial institutions to to take more risk in this area, encourages companies to invest, knowing that they've got this framework in place. And we're we're determined to work with our Indonesian partners in in that regard. So I think Ibushinta, that's a great idea. And I know Pak Doni and other colleagues in the financial sector are already thinking in exactly those terms. So we would be very keen to to work with them. And I mean, my my final word, I think, is is just about that potential for Indonesia to to really become one of the huge beneficiaries of this transition, that I think there is so much in place here in terms of the the vibrant private sector, the sort of effective government which can can set this framework, the natural resources, both on the energy and on the on the on the forest side. All the factors are in place to make Indonesia a real star of this transition, I think. And the the task ahead of all of us is to bring that together in a way that creates creates jobs, creates investment, creates sustainable development in in a in a green and sustainable way. So I think it's a it's a really exciting challenge. Thanks.
Very well put, Owen. That's a great summary. Thank you very much.
If I may add, Ambassador, no, this is actually such a very good suggestion that Ibushinta has, because this is actually leading to a concrete sort of action, right, Ibushinta? So maybe, there's so many different sectors that we could talk about, but perhaps actually just highlighting one actually that the British Embassy in Indonesia, as Ambassador knows very well, can can tackle, probably actually we picked a few key priority sectors. One of them is actually, because I'll be speaking actually for the UK IBC on this, innovating for Clean Air Program that the British Embassy in Jakarta has been working actually with Connected Places Catapult. Essentially, it is actually to address challenges through adoption of e-mobility solutions and policy interventions. So this is actually coming up on the sector of transportation, logistics and so on. And it's actually, the way we think about it, it's quite real, it's quite significant because Indonesia actually has quite a lot of greenhouse emission, gas emissions, if you will, and Jack would know. But how do we then package all of this together actually with, you know, in the transition, with the carbon credit sort of element of it? Yeah, I mean, this is one of the real sort of example where I think the UK government actually with the program that is already ongoing in Indonesia, we can just get together actually and talk about a few of this and focus on that. I mean, because the financing sector, I'm sure the likes of us HSBCs actually would be more than happy to support fully actually in such this end to end kind of a project. It's replacing with EV essentially.
Thank you, Doni. It's always good to end in an action point.
Thank you, sorry.
So we'll come back to you on that. Shinta and Owen, thank you very much for your time. I'm conscious that we've overrun by almost quarter of an hour, but it's it's been very interesting speaking. I think this is an important dialogue and one we need to continue. And there were certainly a couple of key topics there, which I think we could follow up on and follow up on quite rapidly. So I hope, I hope we can do that together with Kadin and and the embassy.